Good evening to all of you who are here with us this evening for our June 22 regular council meeting. Thank you for being here this evening. I'll just remind you briefly that per our agenda and the information there, our mask policy currently encourages audience members who are not fully vaccinated to wear face covering during council meetings. Fully vaccinated individuals are not required to wear masks. All persons should continue to practice social distancing when possible in council chambers. And as I look out there, it looks like many of you are probably practicing that with your seating arrangement. Thank you very much. As we begin our meeting this evening, I'm going to ask our town clerk, if she will, to call the roll for us.
Mayor Marshall?
I'm present.
Mayor Prosser, Mayor Dillinger?
Here.
House Member Delinger?
Here.
House Member Matthews?
Here.
House Member Singleton?
Here.
And House Member Deans?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Full slate of folks here tonight. Thank you, council members, for showing up. At this time, I'm going to follow our usual procedure, and that is asking all of you who can and will to stand with us. And Mr. Singleton is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and he also will lead us in our indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to join me in prayer, please by your head. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to meet here at our beautiful town hall and discuss items and topics that are important to our town and community. As you should be with the members of this council, members of the staff, and those who are presenting information to us, guide us tonight to make decisions that will be best for our future for many years to come. We lift up those who are sick, those who are battling medical illnesses and disease, those who have been injured. Special prayers, Father, to the men and women who are serving in our military, who are representing our country, not only in the United States, but also in military bases and military installations around the world, protecting the freedoms of our country and trying to the countries in which they serve. Be with these men and women and their families. Your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Singleton. Okay, following along with our agenda, our early portion or the first portion of our meeting is what we call petitions and comments. And let me just read a brief explanation regarding that. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear live or I think we have, don't think we have anybody appearing live tonight, is that right? Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We do have some people appearing live. We don't have any appearing virtual, is that correct, Ms. Clerk?
I hope we're all here appearing live.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right. Sorry. At any rate, the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town official or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And did I say that we ask you, if you can and will, to keep your comments to about three minutes for the sake of time expediency for everybody? So I believe we have at least one gentleman, Mr. Hendry, if you will. Come to the podium, sir, and state your name and address, if you will, and we will hear from you.
Name is Henry Griffin, 204 Yergin Road, Garner.
Okay.
First is to comment. I got a piece of paper that said, do this, do that, do the other, make a phone call. We're going to build something across the street. I ain't paying no mind, but that's irrelevant. But I don't own nothing but a company phone, don't have a computer, I don't have internet, just don't want to spend the money. Ain't against it. That might be worthwhile, remember, some of us ain't got to the 21st century yet. Anyhow, you're going to build across the street. I zone in this commercial. I live in a house, but I've been paying commercial taxes for years. I'm paying right at seven grand a year now. Am I going to get a refund if rezoning across the street? Is that going to devalue what goes on on my side of the street or upvalue it? Or is my taxes going to go sky high? That's just a question. I really don't know where it's going. And just a curiosity point, I heard that two before, three and a half times, what it were about a year ago, are they going to be able to complete the project as described so far? Or they're going to have to come back and go, you know, we don't want to do brick veneer, we've got to put siding up, save money. And it seems like to me, years ago, I came down to a town hall meeting, and it was before the internet, if I remember correctly, and they were going to build a gazillion town homes across the street there. And whoever did the decision making at the time said, that's a little too many, scale back some. Is this new project bigger or smaller than the old project was going to be? That's about it, I guess.
Okay. If I may, address council, are you speaking about the project that's on the agenda tonight?
No, I'm speaking about right across the street, where they got Rayner Meadows, you're going to build.
Right, yeah, I believe, yeah. The attorney was going to call to your attention, Mr. Hendry, that if you wanted to comment on that, we will be having a hearing on that matter later on, and people will be recognized to offer up their thoughts on that, at the time of that hearing.
Are you talking about later tonight or another day?
Yes, sir.
Later tonight.
It's on our agenda.
Later tonight.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Later tonight, and you would be sworn in at that time. You would be swearing under oath to your statements.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who desires to comment at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Counsel, I will call on you now to give your indications as it relates to adoption of the agenda, and I will note that we have asked to add a closed session. Our attorney can give us a site now or later on, but it is in an essence to consult with our attorney. And Mr. Manager, I believe there's another item as well for the closed agenda, is that right?
Correct. Litigation and real estate.
So, just for the purpose of the minutes, those sites would be North Carolina General Statutes, Section 143-318, 11A, numeral three, to consult with an attorney regarding litigation, and numeral five with respect to real estate acquisition issues.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, with those modifications or additions noted, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, adoption of the agenda.
Full move, sir.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded, thank you. Is there any questions? I'll ask you to vote. If you favor adoption of agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition. Okay, thank you. I'm not aware of any presentations at this time. Madam Clerk, are you?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, so we will forego that. Counsel, we're now asking you to consider approval of the consent agenda. I believe there are three items on there. Does any council member have a reason to pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented in our packet.
Socket.
Properly made and seconded, thank you very much. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Very good, thank you. Okay, tonight, we have several public hearings that we're going to get into next, and when we get to a quasi-judicial hearing, I will have some other instruction and information to share at that time. And so interested parties can participate in public hearings by either, well, appearing in person or through the virtual platform, and I'll share the other information regarding quasi-judicial matters as we come to that. So we're ready, I believe, for our first hearing, and Mr. Bamford is up as part of our town staff, conditional zoning map amendment with preliminary plan CZSB 2008. Good evening, thank you, Mr. Bamford. We'll hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional zoning request with a subdivision attached. So the subdivision is a condition of approval. This property is located on Weston Road. It's approximately 11.68 acres in size, and the request is to rezone and develop the site into a 24-lot, single-family subdivision. And the applicant is proposing zoning conditions with this request. This is the project site outlined in orange. Weston Road runs along the eastern boundary of the site. We have several neighborhoods in the area. This is North Garner. Meadowbrook Drive runs north of the site. We have Curtis Drive, Weston Ridge Run, and we have the school site that's located southeast of the project site. This is a Google Street View looking north on Weston Road. The project site is located here. This area of Garner, the roads do not have any curb gutter or sidewalks, so any development along these roads would have to add those improvements. This map shows the zoning, the current zoning for the project site. A portion on the western side is zone R9 conditional use, and this was rezoned about a year and a half ago, when the Thompson Road site was rezoned to service business. And a portion of the site was on the eastern side of the riparian buffer, so they requested R9 zoning conditional use at that time. The remainder of the site is zoned R40, single-family, which is low-density residential on 40,000 square foot lots. It's also an agricultural district. North of the site, we have R9 zoning. To the southwest, we have some multifamily 1 zoning with some apartments. A little farther to the southwest, we have some MR1 zoning, which is obsolete zoning district. And this is Weston Ridge subdivision. This is single-family. We have some R12 zoning along Curtis Drive, and also some R9 zoning along Park Haven Lane and Avery Street. The predominant zoning in this area is single-family residential at different density levels. This shows a list of zoning cases in North Garner in this area. The oldest case we could find was from 1997. It was a conditional rezoning request. The most recent case was 2019, which was the Thompson Business Park site, which is located directly west of the site. We do have another couple rezonings from 2016. One was Vandora West, which is north of the Hardy site. That was that single-family subdivision developed west of Purdue Street. We also have another rezoning in 2016 along Johnson Street, and that turns into Volunteer Street in North Garner. So the existing zoning, approximately 7.4 acres, are zoned R40, and approximately 4.2 acres are zoned R9 conditional use District 218. Under this conditional use portion, uses are restricted to single-family, modular, and cluster developments. Under the R40 portion, all R40 uses would be permitted, and this would include single-family, modular, manufactured homes, schools, churches, telecommunications towers, solar farms, agricultural uses, civic lodges, and parks. The applicant has proposed to limit the range of uses on the entire site to only single-family and modular detached and single-family residential subdivision. So they are proposing two uses out of a list of 18, which would be allowed in the R9 general use district. The last condition is development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved preliminary subdivision plan. So the subdivision plan is a condition of the zoning. There are 24 lots proposed for this subdivision. I'm sorry, this is a typo here, this is a residential subdivision. A TIA was not required because of the number of lots and traffic generation. Staff identified about 132 properties within the 300-foot notification buffer. A neighborhood meeting was held on March 31, 2021, with about six neighboring property owners or representatives in attendance. There was one owner that was listed, but they were not identified by name. Moving on to the subdivision proposal, this is a 24-lot, single-family subdivision. It's on approximately 11.68 acres. A tree cover, this plan preserves 10.1% tree coverage, or 1.18 acres, with a replacement landscaping of 2.4% or .28 acres, meeting the minimum requirement of 12.5%. Perimeter buffers, there is a general 15-foot perimeter buffer shown based on the use adjacent to, I believe, multifamily, which is to the southwest of the site. Street buffers are presumed to be 15 feet based on residential, single-family buffer. Street trees are provided approximately every 40 feet as required. And this table shows how many are required along these roads. Parks, this is not located in a property acquisition area. Open space, 10% is required, 13.2% is provided. Fire protection, the inspections department, together with the fire department, reviewed and approved the preliminary subdivision plan. There is a riparian buffer running along the western boundary of the site, located in this area here. This map does show a blue line cutting through the site, but that apparently is not a riparian buffer, because that is not shown on the subdivision plan. Stormwater management, Weston Ridge subdivision is a residential development site that is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a stormwater wet retention pond to treat impervious surface for nitrogen and water quantity requirements to ensure stormwater requirements are met as part of this development. No nitrogen offset payment will be required with the development of this subdivision, as the wet retention pond will reduce nitrogen on-site under the 3.6 pounds per acre per year threshold. Infrastructure, the site will be served by public water and sewer, and this will be through the city of Raleigh. There is a, currently, there is a public water line running along Weston Road, and there is public sewer running through the creek or stream along the western boundary of the site. So public water and sewer will be extended to all of the proposed public roads and lots. Weston Ridge subdivision is located on the west side of Weston Road, north of Curtis Weston Road will be improved to half of a Town of Garner Minor Collector Street section, which is 32 feet back of curb, tobacco curb, within a 60-foot right-of-way with curb gutter and sidewalks. Subdivision will have one access point off Weston Road and will be served internally by the east-west extension of Quiet Refuge Lane and a north-south local street. The local street will stub to the vacant parcel to the north for future connection. And this is the proposed subdivision plan. So this is the proposed stub to the property to the north. Quiet Refuge Lane, I believe, ends here in Weston Ridge subdivision, so it would be extended over and through to the east and make a connection to Weston Road. Again, 24 single-family lots are proposed. This is the stormwater pond here. There is an open space lot located here, and there's also open space along this riparian buffer, along this creek. Street lighting has been evaluated by the engineering department as part of the subdivision If this moves forward tonight, this would go to the planning commission, and the planning commission is required to make a written recommendation regarding consistency with the town's adopted plans, and this would include the Garner Ford Transportation and Future Land use plan, as well as the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. This comes back to the town council for action later. The council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. For the public hearing tonight, staff recommends that once the council has heard comments from the public, concerns, or questions, that the request CZSB 20-08 be referred to the planning commission for review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. That concludes my presentation, and we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford. I appreciate that. So counsel, I will call on each one of you if you have questions to ask and/or comments, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
I have nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Singleton?
Just to confirm, you said, I mean, based off where the site is and where Quiet Refuge Lane ends, this will go all the way? I mean, the site, I'm looking at one of the maps here, it looks like that extends past the site to connect to Quiet Refuge Lane. Are they going to extend it that far, or are they getting it to the end of the property line here? I'm just looking, I'm looking at the map with the orange border, and I mean, you said they were going to connect to Quiet Refuge Lane, but it looks like that's part of the Thompson Commercial Park where it ends, unless I'm reading it wrong, and I could be. So I was just curious, are they going to take it the whole way?
So the project site ends here, and it will extend west and connect over to where it stubs out currently.
Okay, so it will go the whole way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Baringer?
Mr. Delinger?
My question is also about Quiet Refuge. Who's paying to build and connect that road and all those road improvements off the site?
I will let Jeff or Gabby answer that question. I do not know the answer to that.
So Thompson Industrial Park is for their approved subdivision, which now this project is taking over a piece of it. They are still responsible, the responsible party at this point, how they work it out on their end, but it's all private development paid.
For this project, it'll end at the property line? Or they're going to be built in concert?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions.
None. Okay, I don't believe I have any. Let's see, nobody else from staff is presenting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who is here this evening who wants to comment on this Okay, seeing and hearing none. Counsel, are you, as I understand it, we will be asking you to refer this matter to the planning commission at this juncture, is that correct, Mr. Bamford? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one quick question.
Okay.
Is there a required buffering on the northern side of the property? Or is it, are those light zonings that don't require it?
Correct. So there would not be a required buffer along the property line, along the north, along here, and along the northern side, because it's single-family next to single-family zone R9. So the only buffer would be along in here, next to the apartment site, so the buffer will be in here.
Thank you.
Okay, not hearing or seeing any other public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask for a motion from council would be in order.
May I move, excuse me, I move we accept the recommendation of staff and forward this to the planning commission?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Motion properly made and seconded to move this on to the planning commission, then it will come back to this council. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Okay, thank you so much. Next item of business is an annexation. Mr. Bamford, are you covering that as well?
The first annexation case is case number ANX 21-06, and this is for the project Elevated White Oak. And this was an apartment project that was approved on January 21, 2020, for 288 apartment units. And so they are moving forward with construction. They will connect to public water and sewer, and so filing a voluntary annexation petition is required. The site is approximately 19.72 acres in size, and we are also including approximately .62 acres within the right-of-way of Salt Hill Road to make this a contiguous annexation. And I will be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford. I will just make general inquiry of council without going down the line necessarily. Any council members care to ask questions of Mr. Bamford? Any council members care to ask questions of Mr. Bamford? Okay, hearing none, sir. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this annexation? Seeing and hearing none. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and council, so you're asked to consider action on the ordinance that you have before you there?
The mayor moves we adopt ordinance 2021-5043 to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Garner.
Second.
Ms. Singlin and Mr. Matthews, motion properly made in second. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
And any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay. Mr. Bamford, you're our busy person this evening, it looks like, sir, so item three, annexation 21-07.
This annexation is for JS Commerce Park, which is a, which came in as a commercial subdivision to subdivide these large tracts into several tracts for development. This is located on the west side of Jones Sausage Road. It has, the property has frontage on Jones Sausage, Wilmington Road, Calabar Street, and also a very small portion along Hay River Street. This is directly across from Amazon. The, the site is approximately 53.21 acres. In addition, 9.33 acres within the right-of-way of Jones Sausage Road, Wilmington Road, Calabar, and Hay River Street would also be included with this annexation petition. The zoning of the property is heavy industrial I-2, and JS Commerce Park was approved on October the 5th, 2020, as a special use permit, and they are moving forward, they have moved forward to subdivide the property, and they are moving forward, I believe, with building permits to build commercial office warehouse flex space buildings on the site. So, a voluntary annexation is required to connect to public water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this annexation case.
Again, thank you, Mr. Bamford. Council members, any questions for Mr. Bamford? Mr. Dellinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the final status of Calabar? I know there was some confusion as to if it was a DOT road, if it was a town road. What was the ultimate conclusion on that?
I do not know what the ultimate conclusion was. I've looked at it before in the past, and it, it did not appear to be a DOT road, and it also did not appear to be a town-maintained road. But I will let Chris have some additional comments.
It was intended to be, I believe, a state road, but it was never accepted by NC DOT at the time, so it, now with, with the Wilmington Road being realigned into it, it will be a, it will become a DOT road once it's reconstructed. So, it may have to be somewhat reconstructed to meet DOT standards.
So, does that go for Hay as well, the extension there, or does that stay, is that in?
Yeah, well, Hay River's town street, I believe.
And what's the status of the, the sign easements that are on that corner? Are those in encumbrance in any way, or the survey, I know there's talk about the?
The no truck signage you're referring to? Oh, the Hunter's Mark signage, I'm sorry.
The Hunter's Mark signage that's on the corners?
The, the ones on the outside of the street are in easements, and I believe that, right now, I believe they're okay, but the one in the median, that is considered an encroachment, because I believe it was installed without any kind of encroachment permit, but that, whether that signage can stay or has to go has yet to be determined fully by DOT.
And there won't be any, the confusion, there will be any disruption for Hunter's Mark folks to get in and out, or questions on who's main, like, when is the decision going to be made on the maintenance of that road of Calabar?
It would be once it's reconstructed and, and accepted by DOT, following the final walkthrough, which occurs at the end of construction.
And that, we don't know when that's going to be?
Well, it'd be, it'd be part of, part of the development, based on the development timeline. I believe the realignment is one of the last phases of this development.
Because that northern parcel hasn't come before us yet.
Right.
So, it's a ways out.
So, I believe that will be constructed along with that northern parcel.
It will assume responsibility, I guess, for Calabar until that time?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, anything, Mr. Vance down there?
No questions.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who desires to make comment at this time? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion. Council, what is your desire?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2021-5044, annexation of JS Commerce Park.
Okay, thank you, council, Mr. Matthews, for the motion. And the second, properly made. Hearing no other questions, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, thank you very much. All right, our final, I believe it is, public hearing for the night, special use permit SUP SP 2005, Rayner Meadows Apartment. This will be a quasi-judicial hearing. All persons wishing to provide testimony may do so. However, each person must be sworn in prior to giving testimony or answering questions, and in just a moment, we'll ask you to be sworn by our town clerk. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so at this point, I will ask, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications, or have you any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yeah, Ms. Dellinger?
Mr. Mayor, I have had some comment from the public on this particular matter, and that information has been passed on to the town attorney for review, or part of the, to be made part of the record.
Is it your view that this in any way hinders your ability to be sure this is a fair hearing?
It does not.
Okay. All right.
Just for the record, that information provided by Councilman Dellinger has been provided to the town clerk, and it will be incorporated into the record, and if there's any members of the public who wish to receive a copy of that, they can contact either me or the town clerk for that.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you very much. I will further note, as part of this quasi-judicial hearing, that this is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. I believe that covers all the preliminaries I need. So, when we get everybody sworn in, we'll put the hearing and begin.
Do all of you sincerely, truly declare that the information provided is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth? You are all sworn.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, for your diligence. Quite a few people swear in all at one time, for sure. Okay, Ms. Treesburger, are you presenting on this?
Yes, I am. Unfortunately, yes. Unfortunately, Ms. Jones is not giving.
So, I'm going to officially open the public hearing, and I'll recognize you, sir, as the first presenter.
Thank you. A lot of this information will seem somewhat repetitive, since we did discuss multifamily uses, which is a very narrow set of uses as part of the rezoning case, but for purposes tonight, I just want to revisit the factual findings of the technical review committee as we have reviewed these plans specifically for an apartment complex. Again, so the applicant is W&amp;M Partners, the owner of the property is Mr. Bobby Rayner, the location is that Highway 70 and Jurgen Road, and the tract size for the apartment proposal is 18.54 acres. Again, proposed use and current zoning, the zoning was just approved by this body on April 20th, 2021, and you see the exterior setbacks for the parcel listed there. The neighborhood meeting associated with the whole project, again, was held at, on Zoom, on December 17th. There were about eight neighbors in attendance to ask questions, again, prior to the meeting, and that is, again, provided to you as a summary in your staff report. Here is the site plan. You see the various apartment buildings, and I'm going to, nope, not working. You see the various apartment buildings through here, a central club and pool house. There will be some open space here to the right of the property. There's some pretty high retaining walls through here due to the topo and this stream buffer coming through here, and then there's also a power easement, transmission lines that run from southeast to northwest, but there will be a walking trail and some passive amenities provided there as well, for folks to walk the dogs and, and similar. The stormwater devices for the whole project, including the apartments, are located here in blue. There is an architectural rendering of the buildings, mixture of brick and hardy. The open space that is required is 10%. They are providing 10.4. Tree cover, there's not a whole lot of trees that exist on this site today. It is primarily a field, so some of the trees that do exist, though, will be preserved as part of the perimeter buffers, but there's obviously not going to be enough to meet the canopy requirement just by preservation. So, even without counting those, they have met the, the minimum 14% canopy coverage, even if they weren't claiming any preservation at all. So, the new landscaping points will exceed the minimum equivalency of 3.08 acres of canopy. The perimeter buffers range from 25 feet to 35 feet around the apartment site, depending upon adjacent uses or the zoning classification assigned to the vacant parcels. The street buffers, internally, 15-foot buffers are being provided. Again, those just require street trees to be placed within them. The applicant can also use those areas to provide screening material for anything that needs to be screened as well. Street trees are being provided every 40 feet on both sides. The lighting has been shown to be in conformance with UDO requirements, as well as our staff recommendations for LED fixtures. The parking for the apartments, our, our base is required, calculated off of the number of bedrooms. This particular proposal does not have any three-bedroom apartment units, so just one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So, our base would be 540, based on one and a half spaces for the one-bedroom units and two spaces for the two-bedroom units. They have proposed 448, based on their parking study, which calculates out to about 1.7 spaces per unit. To put this in some context, it is a 17.04% reduction in what our minimum requirements would be. We did have the Rand, Rand Village Apartments most recently was just over, a shade over 18%, so this is less than the maximum we have previously approved. Fire protection, the inspections and fire department have both reviewed the plans and given their preliminary approval. There is a new riparian buffer, as noted, again, along the eastern margin of the property, where the open space is being provided. Again, documentation from governing authorities must be obtained before encroachment into those areas. Stormwater management, again, we went over this during the subdivision portion. They are detaining the 110, 25, and 100-year storm events. Not everything does the 100, but this project is. There is also a nitrogen offset payment that will be required as part of this development as well. The parcel will be connected to City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer Systems. You see there, we have an eight-inch water main in Jurgen and a hefty water main in 70 itself, and there is an existing eight-inch sewer main traversing the site already. In terms of the infrastructure, road, and sidewalks, again, I'm not going to spend too much time on this. This was also tied to the subdivision approval. Whichever part comes first will be ultimately responsible before any COs are given. You have the widening of Jurgen Road, the widening of 70, the provisions for both bicycles and pedestrians as called for by the TRC and the UDO. The only thing is that there are some frontage improvements, again, closer to the intersection of 70 and Jurgen that DOT has advised would not be appropriate to do at this time because of their limited scope, and then conflict with the existing signal at the intersection, so the applicant will be doing a fee in lieu of those improvements. Again, internal to the site, we have their private road system, which includes a stub for future connectivity towards Loop. So, the TRC did look as well at the transportation plan, and again, that resulted in a lot of the recommendations to the widenings, and also we turned to those as to how to handle the bike situation. Again, the, the old plan, going back to 2010, had this identified as more of a rural street section for some reason, or at least a, a section that is more typically found in rural areas. We have since recommended that we go to a different section there to accommodate bicycles, and so we have implemented those recommendations within the site plan and other plans along the corridor. This site is located along the future crosstown bus service corridor that was approved earlier this year, or endorsed earlier this year by the Town Council. The exact routing still remains to be determined, but certainly this kind of location would, could potentially serve as a, a bus rider generator, and so we would look at that in the future as well. Completion of half the recommended section on 70, again, that fee in lieu is noted, and the space for bicycle facilities have also been incorporated. The master plan for Parks and Recreation and Greenways calls for a greenway corridor along US 70 as far east as White Oak Road. We have reached a recommendation that this corridor will be implemented on the southern side. That was the only other recommendation from that plan. And then finally, just in terms of TRC being satisfied? And then finally, just in terms of TRC being satisfied with complete conformity with the UDO, there were some conditions procedurally, and you see those listed there. There are several things that have to happen prior to issuance of the building permit, including payment of engineering inspection fees, minor subdivision plaits being recorded with Wake County, payment of public utility fees to Raleigh, that nitrogen off-site payment being made, and the encroachment documentation from DWQ or the other responsible state or federal agency, and construction document approval as well. And then number six, prior to issuance of that CO, the stormwater control measure maintenance plan and memorandum agreement will need to be approved and recorded before that can happen. The applicant is here to address the special use permit criteria. There's eight of those criteria. You will see those listed in your motion worksheet, particularly where option two is noted, and they will present their testimony as to how they feel they are meeting your special use permit criteria, and then there are motions to both approve or deny in your packet to consult as needed based on how you decide to vote. And that's all I have.
Okay. We may have some questions for you. Thank you. So I will ask each council member if you care to comment or ask questions. I'll start with Mr. Vance on this end.
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger?
No questions right now.
Okay. Ms. Behringer? None? Mr. Singleton?
Not at this time.
Okay. And/or Mr. Matthews, okay? Probably have some for some other folks. Let's see, is the applicant following you, Jeff, or do we have any payouts from the town? Okay. We'll recognize that person at this time. Good evening. If you'll state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Powell. I'm an attorney with Nexon Pruitt in Raleigh. The address is 401 401 Park Lake Avenue, 27612. Before I get started, and I apologize for asking for this, but there was some discussion of something that was going in the record while we were standing over here being sworn in it. We caught bits and pieces of it. Can you tell me again what that was?
Yeah, the attorney will...
Councilmember Dillinger made a disclosure that he had had some ex parte communications with the public that constituted, or which was made up of a Facebook posting and comments, and we can provide you with screenshots if you'd like to see those.
Okay. I would like to see them, but that, okay, that's...
Or I have a printout. The printout is a little bit difficult to read because of the fonts.
Okay.
So if you want to provide me your email...
I'd be glad to do that. As staff has explained, and we're going to try not to be repetitive of everything staff has explained, and I know you've considered this property before, this is a request for a special use permit by W&amp;M Partners to construct multifamily on 18.54 acres at the intersection of Highway 70 and Jürgen Road. We have with us tonight several members of our planning and development team who are experts in various areas that address their findings of fact, and they are going to come forward and introduce themselves and speak to those particular findings of fact at this time, starting with Bart McLean.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Bart McLean. I'm the project engineer for the project. I work with William G. Daniel and Associates. And just real briefly, not to run through everything that was run through before, I just wanted to state that we have worked closely with the town of Garner through three review cycles for this project. We have addressed all of their concerns or comments. No further comments were created after the third review. Stormwater for the project is being handled, like Jeff said, with two wet detention ponds located at the bottom of the property. We are going above and beyond the town's requirement for stormwater impoundment and taking care of the 100-year at a request from the town to help out downstream. Water and sewer utilities have been reviewed and looked at by the City of Raleigh and approved, and we're just waiting on SUP approval before water and sewer extension permits will be issued by the city. They have gone ahead and signed the utility encroachment permit with, for DOT. That has been submitted, and DOT has issued that permit for the project. We have also submitted to DOT for the widening and the driveway permits. Received some minor comments back from DOT on the widening plans and resubmitted those and are expecting permits from DOT for that within the next few weeks. We have also submitted to Wake County for a land disturbance permit. They cannot issue their permit until DOT issues all of theirs and until Town of Garner approves the plan, the SUP plan. As stated, we are proposing two private streets within the development that will be developed or constructed according to Town of Garner public street requirements. They will be within a public access easement so that we can get through traffic. We are also proposing, at the town's request, a bus stop and bus shelter out on Highway 70 for future bus traffic. We have met fire protection and lighting requirements, and we feel the site is designed safely to provide pedestrian access throughout the property. And that's all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Counsel, you've heard the presentation. Questions for Mr. McLean? I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
I forgot one thing. Can I say, I was asked to read, our environmental engineer could not be here tonight, and he has written a statement that we would be glad to hand out to all of you, but his, I just wanted to read this as in regards to the noose buffer impact and wetland permitting?
Before you start, that, because this isn't sworn testimony, you would have to choose whether you want to receive this in this format.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, that was addressed to the council. They'll have to make a decision as to whether you can read that into the record.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, you've heard the request. What's your desire as relates to having him read this into the record this evening?
Mine with me.
Okay. Oh, counsel, in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay.
His conclusion was that based on discussions with the Army Corps and DWR and given their reviews of the project to date, we fully anticipate permit approvals any day. DWR has until July 3rd, 2021, and as such, we anticipate their approval no later than Friday, July 2nd. The Army Corps has already indicated their approval is forthcoming. We will provide you these approvals as soon as they are received. I just read the bottom portion.
Okay, sir. Counsel, you have the full letter in front of you now. Thank you. Okay. All right, now we'll go to questions, either in regards to this information or the previous presentation. I'll start with you, Ms. Singleton.
I've got questions. I'll just wait till I get more presented. I'm gonna carry it a second.
Ms. Behringer, anything? Mr. Matthews? Mr. Dillinger? Okay? Okay? All right. We'll hear from the next presenter, I guess.
Next, we have Kevin Dean with Kimley Horn and Associates to address traffic and parking.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Dean. Work with Kimley Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and I've been doing traffic studies for about 10 years. We prepared the traffic study for the project. We actually did an analysis of the full site, which included the apartments and the commercial uses, identified numerous roadway improvements to accommodate that traffic. That study was reviewed and approved by both the town and DOT, and we feel confident that those improvements will be sufficient to mitigate the impacts of the project. So consistent with those reviews by the town and DOT, it's my professional opinion that the proposed plan will not cause undue traffic congestion on the network. Your staff has already noted the ways the project is consistent with the transportation plan and the thoroughfare widening requirements that are being met. Finally, it's my professional opinion that from the perspective of traffic impacts, the project will not materially endanger the health, public health and safety, and won't interfere with safety and transportation services available to existing development. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Councilmembers, questions for Mr. Dean? Any down here? Nope. Any on this side? Okay, thank you very much.
I can address it briefly and then address it through questions.
Sorry, so I'll hit parking real quick. Your staff has noted that we are requesting variance on the parking requirements.
Yes.
We have performed a parking study based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' parking generation data, and that data suggests that for a site as currently proposed, the site would warrant a maximum of 346 parking spaces. That considers both weekday and weekend peak generation for parking, given that the site is proposing to provide about 30% more than what industry standards would suggest. We feel confident that the proposed parking is sufficient for this development.
Okay. Questions about the parking issue that sometimes is an issue that this council wants to ask about? Anybody?
I have questions on the parking. We, according to the report, we've issued several other reductions in parking requirements, and I was curious as to what the breakdown of single, of one-bedrooms and two-bedroom units are for this project. My math told me 110 and 154, but I don't know if that's correct or not.
We looked at 108 single, 108 one-bedroom and 156 two-bedroom, so it sounds like we're in the same ballpark as you, sir.
And a present requirement for a single one-bedrooms is one and a half, and two-bedrooms is two.
Yes, sir.
And a 50-50 split would put it at 1.75 parking spots, correct?
Sounds right.
So what you're asking for is actually less than that, but also to get rid of all the guest parking.
So the ITE data that our analysis was based on accounts for guest parking that were at similar facilities, so that while the rates, you could look at singular rates for each unit type, ITE suggests rates for bedroom types and units, and those studies cover things like amenity areas and guest parking, and so when we reference that 346 spaces would be needed to address peak parking demand, that would cover guests and residents, but then when the site proposes 30% more than that, we're more than confident that that addresses any additional that we'd expect, so.
I have some questions from Mr. Treesburg. We've run into some parking challenges with the UDO rewrite, so I'm curious on his aspect. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from counsel to... Mr. Dean? Okay, I guess not at this time. Thank you.
Next, we have Eric Wilkinson, who is the architect, design professional here.
Thank you, and welcome, sir.
Good evening to all. Eric Wilkinson, 1848 Wake Forest Road, Raleigh. I'm with Wilkinson Design. We're lucky to be the architects on this project. As stated, it consists of one- and two-bedroom projects, units, excuse me. They range in size, starting at 716 feet is our smallest unit, and our largest two-bedroom is 1,212 square feet. These are breezeway buildings, three stories, wood-framed, fully sprinkled. We have, we've worked with the staff as far as the types of materials that are on the building. They consist of brick veneer, hardy siding in four-inch exposure, seven-inch exposure, and board and batten as a way to break up the building masses. As stated before, we have an amenity area. The team worked together to try to locate the buildings to help create the amenity area around the pool. We do have an amenity building, clubhouse, along with a pool building and a mail kiosk. There are 11 total buildings. We have three building types, and I think that sums it up. We welcome any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the architect, counsel? I guess not, sir. Thank you very much.
The team engaged an appraiser who's not able to be here this evening but has submitted a signed and sealed report. I would ask for your, to allow us to submit that into the record as well, and I will point you to the portions of it that I think summarize his analysis.
Okay. Is that something you're going to hand up?
If...
Excuse me?
If approved.
Okay. Counsel, in favor of receiving that? Yes.
First, let me point out that it's purely coincidental that the appraiser's last name is Lewis. He's no relation to Mr. Lewis, who is part of W&amp;M Partners, so that just was a coincidence. If you would look at the bottom of the second, the first, the second and third page are his summary, and then supported by the analysis as attached, the bottom of the first page is his summary paragraph regarding his professional opinion of the impact on the value of adjoining and surrounding properties. And it states that based on his familiarity with the subject property, as well as an analysis of submarket trends and property values, the proposed Rayner Meadows apartment project will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties. This conclusion is supported in the market study and impact report which follows. Based on the testimony that we've provided and additional information, I think the applicant has shown that this project satisfies the eight findings of fact that are required for approval. The proposed use will not endanger public health or safety. The proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. If completed as proposed, the development will comply with the requirements of this ordinance. The proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted transportation plans and other relevant adopted plans. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, and screening and operating characteristics. Any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment and the storm buffers, stream buffers, I'm sorry. The public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the project while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development, and adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. This time, we're glad to answer any questions that you have for any member of the team.
Sure. Okay. And at this point, I'll ask counsel if they have any questions for Attorney Powell. Anybody?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Singleton.
If there are 264 units here, I know that in earlier, in a question Mr. Griffin raised was that if there was another use on here, say townhomes, would there be more than 264 units on here if it was a different use? It would not exceed...
No, there would not be.
Okay. So about the same number, so whether it's apartments or townhomes, roughly the same number?
Townhomes would be slightly less.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms.?
One brief question, and it was brought up in the public meeting. So the utility lines that currently traverse the property would be maintained in their current location? That's what was communicated to some folks.
Could you repeat that, please?
The power lines that currently traverse the property, would those are going to be maintained in their current configuration?
Yes. We were required to keep the buildings outside of the easement area, but are allowed to put parking and pavement within it.
That'll look interesting. That'll look interesting.
Any other questions for Ms. Powell? I believe there are none. Was that your presentation, or are we hearing from anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we've heard from the applicant. Are there others here this evening who wish to give testimony to this matter? I know Mr. Hendry does, and so I'll recognize you, sir, at this time.
It's official, Ms. Tamra.
I believe it is, sir. Sure enough.
So I need to say it all again. I just seen the word Zoom up there a while ago. I don't even know what Zoom is. But I don't know on a computer. Got no intentions of buying one. I'd take that money and put it in the Roth IRA. I think it's a far better use.
We catch you outside after the meeting.
The part about my taxes going up and down in the value, I think you spoke to that a little bit. And I guess because you have a set of plans drawn up, we would have talked about it in my day, what you're going to build, what you're going to put in it, the materials and all that, that's set. That's not going to be changed around. It is what it is.
The conditions, yes, sir, Henry. The conditions, yes.
Okay. The one part that don't make sense to me is, that's a nice big project, and I imagine there's some big dollars there. I can't imagine it has no effect, one way or the other, on surrounding properties. Is my taxes going up again, or y'all going to give me a discount? That's the question in the back of my mind.
I don't believe the value of these properties, well, I don't think this will influence this group in terms of tax increases, but obviously, tax rate is based on property values. I think, that probably doesn't answer your question, but.
Chances are probably great when property is reappraised in four years, your property will increase in value, yes.
And your taxes will go up.
And your taxes will go up. But the value of your property will keep going up.
That's right.
Because your property is uncommercial.
Adverse effect on neighboring property. He seems to think so.
That would probably happen even if this project wasn't there.
True.
Yeah. That would probably happen even if this project wasn't completed, because your property continues to increase in value, which also increases the amount of tax you have to pay. That's true. That's a fact.
All right. I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. All right. Mr. Steve, state your name and address, sir, if you will.
I hope everyone's doing well.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time that you guys allowed me. I have a lot of value in your service that you do. Treat me very well. I have a couple of concerns.
Steve, I think everybody knows you, but state your name and address for the record.
I own the property right in front of the project. And been in my family's for, since 1947. But obviously, I have two businesses there, everybody knows. And also, I live in Garner. I own a residence in Garner, and which I value the community. The concern, first of all, at a, you know, a prior meeting, I had stated that I don't, I'm not against the project, but I guess I'm just more of a concerned neighbor, so to speak. One of the things I was concerned about was, it looks like they've done a lot of hard work and put together a team of people that knew what they were doing, and it's, but then again, it's a big project. So I think everybody recognizes that. Just looking at it objectively, I think it's going to help me. And I think it will raise the property value, but if you ever decide to sell, that'll help you. So, you know, but a couple of concerns are that, assuming that the property is going to be sold in the near future, once all these permits go through, should we be concerned about a maintenance plan for all the work? And I mean, once everything's established, you know, we don't want, none of us want a place that's not maintained. So I would just put that out there to the board and see if they, see what they think about that. And my other concern is, and I had talked to Mr. Lewis, but, and Mike and Bert, both fine gentlemen here, about it a little bit. And I know the lady that was up here, the attorney, she had mentioned that it's not going to impact anything, and, but I think it's impacting one thing, and that is my driveway at the far end. And it seems to me that there's, there might be a little problem there, and maybe Mr. Bamford could, you know, help me with that. I don't know. But it seems to me that it might be blocking my driveway, and I really need that as an exit point. Other than that, I have, you know, if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Did anybody from planning want to address Steve's question about his driveway? Had you already talked to them about that, Steve?
Perhaps I could.
He was trying to zoom in a little bit on that area.
The far, the building towards, I guess, west would be towards Raleigh. It comes out as a triangle, and there's a driveway directly in front of that. And then you can see that they, right, yes, right there where you have the cursor, right in that area, yes, sir. And our driveway comes out right there on the property line, pretty much.
We are, we're required to widen Highway 70. There, and then in order.
But is it on his property, or is it on your property?
It's on the right away.
My driveway is on my property.
You're fine.
I'm fine. I'm probably the one that had to.
Oh, you're fine.
Thank you.
We are required to widen for the entire frontage of our property, which, in this case, brings us all the way down to beyond where his driveway accesses Highway 70, and then the taper required by DOT to go back to the existing pavement. Due to the fact that his driveway now runs in front of our property within the right of way, there's just nothing can be done but to eliminate that driveway, and he still has two others on Highway 70. So we're not limiting him to a, you know, one-way-in, one-way-out type situation. He still has two. He had three to start with, so.
Steve, I think, do I, yeah, okay. I understand the two remaining driveways would be.
See how it extends out beyond our, within the right of way.
Okay. Just for my identification, again, this is for Steve. I understand that the driveways you're talking about, the one is basically in front of his main building, and the other one would be the one that goes, I guess, north out to 70 there. Is there any?
Yeah, you can, Jeff, could you scoot it down a little bit and show his whole property frontage?
A question for Mr. Trezenberg related to this. Is the driveway that's there illegal, or as is? I mean, if there are two, there are three there, they've all been there, is it as it is improper? And what precedent is there for usurping that existing driveway?
I'm going to punt that one to Mr. Johnson. But it ultimately has to do with, you know, NC DOT and encroachment approvals.
If it's approved, though.
Right. But this goes back so far in time.
That's right. I wouldn't go so far to say it's an illegal access. It's, I mean, I think there are three driveways that were previously constructed on a state route. We see this all over the place. It's not uncommon to have some of these driveways, what they call, kind of consider encroaching on the adjoining owner, but it's all in public right-of-way. It's not going on to the property itself, so I'm not sure if there is a way that it could possibly be tied back into the right turn lane with a new apron. That's something that they would have to review and determine with DOT. Does that answer your question?
I mean, yeah. I mean, it's a legal driveway that, if this is approved, would then be usurped by this plan, or not necessarily usurped, or?
I don't know that it necessarily means the driveway has to go away. I think that's a discussion that would need to be had with, between the owners and DOT.
Is this where Aldo Marine was at, running out there? That's where I'm trying, okay.
This is the most western driveway.
Yeah.
May I comment?
Okay, yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
The, perhaps I can shed some light on your question about the driveway. The driveway is within the bounds of the survey on my property. So that I do know for a fact. So, you know, I just, perhaps, it seems to me like, as long as they don't block my driveway, DOT, or whoever's in charge of widening the road, I don't really foresee a problem. You know, and that was the, I wanted to follow up with that. My concern was that the driveway gets blocked. And since there is two businesses, I know someone had spoke a moment ago about there being an entry and an exit, but since there's two businesses, I would like to see that continue as an exit. There you go. That's a very good picture right there. So that, or driveway.
Okay.
So you saying that, well, everything on this side of the yellow line is in right-of-way? Is that correct? So even some of the parking is technically in right-of-way?
I would think so, yes, sir.
Yeah. But it's been there a long time, as long as I can remember.
Yeah. Yeah. Remember the deer out front there that my uncle put there years ago? I bet you do.
Yes. After you mention it, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of make a suggestion. There's still some outstanding permits related to this project. I think it might be, makes sense to continue this till our next meeting, so that they can work on a resolution to this. I don't think it'll be holding them up on anything, since they have environmental permit, and our next meeting is the first week of July, I believe. I don't think it would.
With all due respect, it will be holding us up, because there are permits that are contingent on this process. And again, to point this out, this is absolutely a DOT requirement. It's not anything that we asked for, nothing we wanted to have done, and I'm assuming if it's a DOT requirement, it's going to be a DOT requirement for whatever ends up going on this property. But it's not something that we went in and said, we want to do this and eliminate his driveway. It's, you see the right-of-way line, and that's where the DOT is requiring that the improvements be made.
Perhaps we can come to a compromise right now.
Well, that's why, that's why.
I have a thought, if I could express my thought. And that would be that if we, and they do indeed, in other words, this is out of your hands, it sounds like. Okay. So if they do indeed take away that exit, perhaps we could put a street in there to connect to some portion of the neighborhood, so we could have an exit.
I don't know if that speaks.
That would be my solution.
To go, just so I'm clear on what, to go up through the development?
Yeah, sure. And come out elsewhere.
I think the storm water may be the problem there.
I don't know. Just, just the thought just occurred to me, so.
Mr. Dean, did you want to address anything that clarifies this?
Thank, I just wanted to note, I think one of the pieces about the driveway going away is typically NC DOT doesn't like to see driveway access within a turn lane. So you can have a driveway that's served by a turn lane, but with the driveway, the northernmost driveway being within the limits of the turn lane itself, that's why DOT would want to see that go away. I just want to make that note, in case that helps.
Okay.
I would comment that one of the, Mr. Mayor, that one of the review criteria of the permit is adverse effects on other properties and businesses. So that's a significant consideration for us, and I'd like to see there be a resolution. I'm not sure what that is, but it is one of our major considerations with approving the site plan.
Well, so at this point, obviously, we've heard Steve's concerns, and we have heard from the attorney, obviously, who stated fairly explicitly that from her position is, any delay is problematic. So before I ask council to respond on your issue, Mr. Dallinger, I will see, I think we've heard from everybody now that we're going to hear from. Is that correct? Okay.
I just wanted to address this, because Steve and I have met. My name's Mike Lewis, and I'm the developer. We would love not to have to build that road. We don't want to do anything to hurt our neighbors. DOT is requiring that, their comment to us, because that was one of the first things we said, is that that's our right-of-way, and we want that there. So, I mean, I'd love to change it for Steve, and I'm sorry, but that's what they're telling us we have to do. And what Kevin is saying is what we're hearing, they're going to require, because of the power easement and the water on the right-hand side, basically, you're going to have to have an access point on the site whenever it's developed right where we have it. You can't go too close to Loop Road. They won't allow it, it's too many driveways close to Loop. So most likely, whatever happens on the site is going to be very close to where that road is today. And given that, and what DOT has said, that's pretty much what we're going to have to do. And it's really DOT's call. We don't have a say. We'd love for it to go away and help Steve any way we could.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Okay, I believe we've heard from everyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And council, now would be, I guess, a proper time to have any further discussion. Mr. Dallinger seemed to be leaning in one direction. Obviously, there's a proposal before us that we could, should vote on, unless you want to, unless you want to delay it in regards to comments from Mr. Dallinger. So anybody want to respond to what he has said thus far?
Well, it sounded like it's, I understand the plight here, and what we're talking about, and, but it sounded like it's in DOT's hands at this point, and there's not much, it can be done. We could delay it, but the stance is still going to be the same, it's in DOT's hands. So sadly, that's just the way it works sometimes, a little bit out of our control, but it is what it is.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would favor it a way, either to the 6th or the 20th of July, do we get a correspondence in writing, or an email from DOT stating that it has to be done? I know the developer's saying that, but so we can have that. Steve can see that also, that when we see it's forced in the right-of-way, that's pretty obvious. But until we see that, and there's any way you would like to reconfigure the driveway, but the point he makes about in the turn lane is you don't want a driveway close to a turn lane. I understand that, too. If we could get a correspondence, I would prefer we delay it, we get a correspondence directly from DOT addressed to the town stating that. That way, he has that, and it clearly states that.
Other council members comment?
I just have a comment. I would favor.
I just have a comment. I would favor delaying or continuing until the first meeting in July, too. And if a question, if DOT is going to require that that driveway be closed, do they not have any, or can we ask them if they have any responsibility to make Steve whole? Because they are taking away a driveway that is crucial to the development, I mean, to the flow of traffic through his businesses, the way the buildings are, are positioned. Do they not have any responsibility to not harm his business?
Ms. Attorney, do you want to respond to that?
I really am not qualified to render an opinion on, on what DOT's authority is in this. Obviously, if any property owner feels aggrieved by a decision of the town or the state, they can file what's called an inverse condemnation case and indicate that their, their property rights or interests have been impaired, but.
Well, it certainly makes sense that that driveway can't stay there with that turn lane, I understand that, but to just completely take away an access point seems a little like overstepping the boundaries a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Vance, you want to weigh in on this at all?
I see the complication relative to the driveway, and I understand the engineering process when it comes to safety and having a turn lane. Having driveway coming into a turn lane, that's quite intuitively clear. And it is a difficult, it's a difficult decision or situation for the, for the property owner who is accustomed to having the three, the three access points you currently have. And I also hear about the attorney saying about the, the permit process and the timeline for the project possibly being jeopardized. However, to, if DOT is gonna write a letter to the state that this is necessary for, for the safety of the, of the traffic, of the citizens relative to that turn lane, and that will satisfy Mr. Stevens, Mr. Steve, and if we're able to get within two weeks, because we're saying two weeks' time, that's relatively a short, short time period. And I'm, I'm willing to hear, hear what the developer says about that two week, two week possible wait.
Okay, I think I close the public hearing, but I think we can, we can hear from, yeah.
I would say let, let's let Kevin address both the ability to get such a letter, the likelihood of getting such a letter, and the timeframe as well as anything else.
If I may, the only thing I'd say about the timeframe is we come up on a holiday, maybe tough to get an answer in a quick turnaround time. But then, just wanted to reiterate, I think with future redevelopment and widening of US 70, those three driveways likely wouldn't remain anyways, and so I'd expect that one or more of those driveways will go away irregardless of this project. But I, I would, I would confirm what everyone has said, that getting a quick answer from DOT may be difficult. So we, leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, sir. So counsel, I guess there are basically two choices, either to, to delay, as I'm hearing some suggest, or to move on the, on the proposal as it is. And of course, I'm sure Steve would still pursue some conversation with DOT to see what his options are. Yes, sir, Mr. Lewis?
Let me mention one thing. He had a good point to make. We'll say this, if DOT comes back and says we don't have to do that, we'll be happy for it to go away. And now I'm on the record saying that, so we, we'd love to leave Steve's driveway alone.
Yes, sir.
So if, if we can all talk to them, if they'll talk to us, we're, we're happy to do it under that condition.
Okay, thanks, sir. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we delay this until we can hear from DOT. That would also provide an opportunity for the developer and the landowner to come up maybe with a potential compromise in that time as well.
Okay, there's a motion for the counsel.
I'll second that if you put in a specific date. I would suggest that July 20th, because they're correct with the holiday coming up. Some, any type of correspondence from DOT, doesn't have to be a letter, it can be an email as long as it's a correspondence that, that comes up, but I would specify the 20th, which would be a month, which takes into consideration the holiday.
I will include that in my motion.
I'll second that motion.
And I guess just from a logistical standpoint, Ms. Attorney, would we be basically reopening the hearing and, and just continuing the hearing for a final decision, or is this, is the term delay, I guess, in reopening it at that time?
Right, you would reopen it at that time to receive additional evidence, which would also give the applicant, you know, an opportunity to confirm or rebut that information, as well as any other interested parties.
Right, okay. So, okay, everybody clear on the motion? Do you have it? Okay, you ready to vote? All right, the motion is properly before you. If you favor that, would you please say aye?
Aye.
If you're in opposition to that, would you please say no? Okay, the motion carries, and we will reconsider this matter at our July, was it 20? Was that the next meeting, July 20 meeting? And hopefully, we can make a final determination at that time. Okay, that concludes that particular matter. Thank you all for your indulgence. Took some time to, to, to work through that, but thank you for your time. Okay, we are now ready to take up the first item under New and Old Business. Item one, we'll hear from Mr. Beck. He is here, is that right? Yeah, there he is, okay. 2021 Bonds Preliminary Finding Resolution.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I have for you this evening a preliminary findings resolution related to a proposed bond referendum in November of 2021. This is the first of several required legal actions that the council would have to take to proceed towards that referendum. This basically just, in broad terms, lays out the need for the bonds, the, the general purposes for their use, as well as the amount of the bonds. And if counsel approves this this evening, then we would move forward with going to the LGC and getting their guidance and submitting an application to keep the, the process moving forward. I would like to point out, there's one typo in the resolution that was in the, the agenda. Ms. Jones pointed that out to me this afternoon. It's, it's minor, but in Section 1A, the Roman numerals, it should be about a third of the way down the page, it should be IV for item number four under Section 1A, and it's actually VI for six instead of four, so just like to point that out and ask that, that you all consider approving the, the resolution with that one correction.
Okay. Counsel, clear on that? You did say Section 1A, I'm trying to find it.
Yes, sir, that's right. On page two, about a third of the way down the page, the last Roman numeral there is VI, it should be IV.
Okay. All right, anybody have questions for Mr. Beck in regards to his presentation? Hearing none? Okay, counsel, you're asked to consider approving the resolution. So what is your, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move we approve the resolution, preliminary findings resolution, excuse me, 2021 2454.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singlin. Motion probably made and seconded to approve Resolution 2021 2454. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, vote no, and it is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Beck, for your presentation, sir. All right, I believe that concludes our main agenda. We will now go to item J and committee reports, and I know, I believe we have at least one committee report, so I'll recognize the HR Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. HR Committee has started to, the interviewing process of a number of applicants for the various positions that are open on the boards of commission. It's, we have approximately 28 new applicants along with previous applicants that we are re-interviewing for those who are interested, so it's taken some time to go through the process. We will continue with the process this week, and the goal intent is to try to finish early in July to bring the, the recommended replacements for the various boards, commissions for consideration and approved by the council during a formal meeting in July.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do any council members have questions for Mr. Vance and/or Mr. Dallinger? I believe it's a two-person committee, right, yeah?
Yes, it is.
And as mayor, I will, I will thank you for your work. I've served on that committee, and when you have a number of applicants, it can be time-consuming, so I thank you for the process you're going through, and we'll look forward to hearing back from you when you're ready for, with a final report. Okay, thank you. Are there any other committee reports at this time we need to hear from? Okay, we will now hear from our manager for manager reports.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have the Garner info in your packet, so if you have any questions about that, let me know. And Mr. Hodges is gonna lead a discussion about the downtown water tower logo. Raleigh is in the process of getting prepared to repaint that, and we have a chance to kind of give some direction on what we want that logo to look like.
I'm just, Mayor, members of council, Ms. Howe, our downtown development manager, is also on by teams tonight, and so after I go through the slides, I'll, I can bring her up on the screen, or we may be back and forth looking at, at options. We had sent a communication out to everyone to let, that let you know that City of Raleigh has notified us that they're going to repaint the Rand Mill Water Tank, which is good news. The challenging part of that is that we had a very short turnaround time to give them an answer back on the repainting of a logo that is on the water tower. So we do need to give some, them some feedback after tonight's meeting. We do have the, the opportunity to change the logo, as I mentioned. The cost will be at the town's expense to do that. We will get a quote for that after we give them the final logo, and they get the, the rendering done for that and the, and the cost back to us. Currently, the logo is on the water tower. Some of you that were on council may recall this, but when the water tower was painted, probably 10, 12 years ago, we did not have a downtown logo, and so we worked to develop a logo that used elements of the Great Place To Be Swish logo, and it was applied to the water tower. However, it does roll up onto the curved part of the tower, and that is not currently a recommended practice for doing that, so it has always been somewhat skewed on the water tower, and while it's been attractive, it's been not, not the easiest to, to make out and read. We also have a, a challenging situation that, and I apologize, it's labeled ladders on this slide and cable covers and another, but we have several cable covers, as you'll see here and here, that dictate the placement of the logo, so it's a little bit, on each side, it's, it's placement to, to be visible on Highway 70 and on Main Street, Garner Road, is sort of dictated by those cable covers. And currently, that logo is not being used anymore. The Downtown Garner Association did develop a new logo, the one that you see here, back in 2016, is being used widely for downtown promotions. However, the shape and the detail in it does not make it ideal for use on a water tower, and we'll talk a little bit more about the, the space on there later. Also, there's some thought about whether or not, as the, the association develops and the downtown further develops, whether this locate, this logo would change. And additionally, if the town were to ever go in, undergo any type of rebranding exercise, then there may be some other brands or logos out there that would be competing. We did get recommendations from our vendor. We sent a couple of mockups that had been done previously to the vendor. The feedback was that while they were attractive, they recommended that they were busy and would be very difficult to see the detail. They sent a couple of examples of mockups they had done, one for Knightdale on the left, and one for Holly Springs on the right, and on the right here on Holly Springs, it's a little faint here, but you see a dotted line. That's really where the flat side of the tank stops being flat, and so our logo, they're recommending be above this handrail, but predominantly below this dotted line. So you see with Holly Springs, they're putting just the tip of the holly leaf above it, but it really doesn't stick up nearly as far. Our previous logo was up in this kind of range, and it really curved a lot. They also pointed out that using simple bold text and graphics for readability was preferred and recommended. Holly Springs, I will note that this band, twisted band of colors that comes out of their logo, this will go all the way around their water tower, so we'll come back to that as we look at other options. And whether or not it's just not on this drawing, I'll also point out that both of these are very clean tanks that have not any of the hardware and the cable covers and so forth like ours does, so this looks, this would even probably start looking busy on our particular water tower just because of all the hardware that we're dealing with. So Ms. Howe, working with some members of the DGA Board and with some input from the, some of their other committee members who have expertise in this, looked at several options. One would be a band, a wide band that would continue all the way around the tank with the lettering section on two sides. And there's two examples here, just using large block letters, using fonts that are currently being used in marketing initiatives so that we're not starting 100% from scratch. One is edged in, in yellow or gold color, one is not, one has a line separating the letters and one doesn't. Also, options three, four, and five, which would not have a, a heavy colored band, so you'd have the lettering in blue on the body of the tank, and then there's three different choices of simple bands that would go all the way around the tower. One observation here was that the, the open band, but it'd be obviously less expensive, but it may be less interruption by those heavy cable covers, which we're gonna have to either work with the, the company to paint over the top of, which will provide some of a unique 3D effect, or paint underneath. Either way, I think we're gonna see disruptions to whatever goes around, and if we're using a heavy, full-colored band, we believe that those wide interruptions from the cable covers would likely look odd. So if we're going to take something all the way around, we would propose that one of these, these thin bands may work best. I should also point out that we don't have to take the bands all the way around the tower. We could simply end these lines just outside of the width of the lettering and almost be like a rectangle, and that's what would go there, so we don't have to continue these around. And while we all, I think, think it would look good to go around, the complication of those cable covers may just be something that we just don't want to choose to do. So considerations, again, visibility and legibility from the recommendation of the, the consultant, text only to avoid development of a new logo that may change one day, simple colors to avoid conflict with future rebranding, whether that's downtown or townwide. And as I've always mentioned a couple of times, this tank does have these wide cable covers that could interrupt solid bands. And so with that, I'll be glad to, to stop and answer any questions, and we can move this down and, and get Ms. Howe up as well if she has any additional input or questions for her.
Okay, thank you, John. Thorough presentation there, and of course, counsel's already received information about this, and some of you already commented, but we agreed to take it up this evening, and we do need to go ahead and make a decision.
Yes, sir, we got an extension actually from last week till after, after tonight's meeting, so at least there'd be an opportunity to talk to counsel about this. Next step, Mayor, would be, once the decision's made, we would get the final design, we will get it finalized in the formats needed. We will get it to the company, they will provide us back a quote. We'll go through a, a confirmation of matching the color, and then we'll bring that quote back to counsel. I did ask the vendor if they had an estimate of cost, and for one of the busier versions of this that we showed them initially, he thought the cost would range between about $23,000 and $34,000 for that particular one. We've not had a chance since we have these more simplistic ones to run that by him, but I do think that sometimes these are in the $10,000 to $25,000 range even for the, the more simplistic versions. even for the, the more simplistic versions.
Okay, thank you, John. So at this point, I'll, I'll have council do a couple of things. If you have questions for John or comments, fine. And/or if you want to go ahead and express your views about various options and which ones you prefer, now would be a good time to do that. And I'll, I'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Behringer, and we'll work our way around.
Well, I like option number three, because you have the colors that we use in Garner and so forth that are associated with us. It's not, the yellow bands make it a little brighter, not quite as stark. And it, it's simple and it tells the story.
Okay, I'll sort of swipe around and go to Mr. Singleton next and get to everybody.
Yes, three or four are fine. Three sign, I like five the best, but I don't think the yellow line will show up good. It's so, so thin there. So three, that Ms. Behringer mentioned, sign with me. And remember now, that was a song that, where a water tower town said, remember that song?
Yeah, okay. I'll go back down.
It's written by a lot of water tower towns, but Scotty was from Garner, and we did have a water tower downtown. We can kind of clean it.
I'll this time go to Mr. Vance down here.
Either three or four is fine. It's simple, straight to the point, clear. So either three or four.
Good.
So are you asking for a definite decision?
Three.
You get to choose between one and two. John is not putting those up there. I know, I know what John's doing.
Well, yeah, I, well, I, I'm, well, I am. I'm trying to save us some money. And I actually think, again, because of those cable covers, it's really more about, I don't, I think the break in that wide band is going to be challenging. Or not just myself, but I think that we all believe that may be a hindrance to that looking as good as we thought it would when we were coming up with the initial concepts.
And John, can you go back to the, the other slide?
I'm sorry?
The, the one before this one.
The correct one.
I would, I, I'm, I'm leaning toward three.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Dellinger next.
Can you go back to option one? I have a question, I have a question about the cable covers. So the, the thinking is to paint them or, or not paint them?
Well, we're not sure what the, the vendor will come back and tell us they can do. So we, we don't know. Either way, they're probably going to either interrupt by having a white cable cover in the middle of a blue band, or if we paint over them with the band, are you going to start having sort of a three-dimensional thing?
And if they, if they can, if they paint over them, I think it's actually going to look a lot less disruptive than the single bands going around. Because you have the single band, you're going to see that distinct jump off. Whereas you have the solid band, you're not, it's going to blend in a lot better. I, I'm sort of leaning, I, I'm in favor of sort of option one. I think it, it jumps out a little bit better. I like the gold option as well, but I think we, it is traditional Garner colors. But we do have a new high school on the, you know, in town. So we don't want to forget about them. I think when we did some mockups of this, we did, we did a really busy version. And this is extremely simplified, and I like it. But it really, when that band goes around, it's very striking and it really presents itself. I think the other options, depending on the color of the water tower, which is relatively light, any gold you use is going to get washed out. There won't be the contrast there. So I, I'm in favor of option one. On the other side, I would be more in favor of option four, just because it's simple and the contrast is there. That, that, those are my options. Kathy's going to be mad at me.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm just going to outvote you, that's all.
Mr. Matthews gets away in next.
I've already got three.
I like option four.
Those lines will be short, so you don't have to deal with all the other stuff. And I agree that the gold will kind of get lost in, in the white and stuff at that, at that angle. And, and that jumps out right at you. It's simplistic. It makes a statement, and you see it, and you know where you're at. And, and cost-wise, I'm sure that'd be a little bit more easier than other options.
And on all these, are we talking about going all the way around with the narrow lines?
No, no.
Because I heard you mention, short.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
According to info, it says bands continue around tank.
They don't have to. That, these, these are just drawn and continued. If they were cut off, and Ms. Howe can correct me when I'm wrong, but it would probably cut off just a reasonable amount of space beyond the, the lettering.
We may have to backtrack for those that like three or four, whether they prefer the short bands or the wraparound. Are you, are you already clear on that?
Well, I, I will say that the gold here was added at, one, one recommendation, Ms. Howe felt the same, that the gold would wash out on the tank. So if you see the gold swishes that are there now, they do sort of wash out.
Interesting, since we have a current picture, the gold would wash out on the tank. The blue washes out worse than the gold.
Yeah, and that's a light blue that's not, that, that's, that's not this blue. This is a more navy blue that they've been using for downtown.
It still has faded.
That one has faded a little bit. It's also, I'm not sure how exact the color was matched to our Garner blue.
It was supposed to be. I remember at the time.
And so that would be this blue. That, the original logo would be the blue up at the top, which on these screens don't really distinguish that much. But this is our bright Garner blue, whereas this one is closer to a navy that downtown's been using for their promotional materials.
Right. That's, then the drawback, I want, what Mr. Dellinger likes, number one, is it'll fade. Because that's one of the issues I have with our park sign, is how bad they fade. And we're going to talk about that when we talk about the other two parks and changing our, looking at, changing either the product the park signs are put on or changing the signs and start something different. But anyway, we'll get to that later, where that fades bad, really bad.
John for four.
All right.
The short bands. Okay, well, the mayor wants to weigh in on this. I'm, I'm going to pretend like I'm climbing up on top of the, of the water tower and sitting in the middle of it by saying that I don't think we could go wrong really with any of them. I think all the options are nice, but I realize we're asked to, to give a preference. And I, I tend to think that maybe option four is, is a good option. I know the gold looks nice, and of course, those are colors that we've had. But as our town has grown, we have other colors, at least in terms of our education system and our high schools, that are not the same color as those. But at any rate, I think the blue looks nice, it's solid. So, but at any rate, this is a, basically a voting decision for the council.
Yeah, and you don't have a vote.
Well, I know, so, okay. Unless I declare a tie, I guess. I don't think that will happen. Okay, so anything else before we get a motion on the floor and see if we can agree to go ahead and, and get the information so we can get this done?
I think one point of clarification, several people that said four did not distinguish the short lines like Mr. Matthews did. So if we went with four, I think one of the things I heard is the thinner bands could be painted possibly over the cable runs and not be as, as, as disruptive. So I think, I do think to the manager's question earlier, we might need some clarifications whether or not the, the folks that were thinking four were thinking to continue them all the way around the tank.
Think, I mean, if we're going to do single skinny bands and don't wrap it all.
Okay, so just stop. So basically, the, the, the short lines would just be at the appropriate length over the lettering, and we do them at the appropriate placement on each side. So it would almost be like a rectangular sign without ends on it.
And I, if I may, mayor?
Go ahead, yeah.
I imagine the logo will go in the exact same two places that it is now for visibility. I mean, I was in charge of placing those where they are. And one reason it's where it is is because you can see it from Creech Road if you had moved it around. And it stays off the cable covers. And then the other one, on the other side of 70, was in the only spot where you could see it through the, the tree line. So we likely will have to keep that unless something's changed.
Yes, I would say that the top of that would be, stay at this point now. Because the one difference is, for whatever reason, we didn't either get the same guidance or whatever that we're being given now that to make it show up better, we would want to stay under this sort of indention line. So placement on this part of the tank, to Mr. Dickerson's point, but it would be between here and here. I think would frame out nicely with the lines at the top. So is it okay to go with four? I think there's a fair number of fours, Ms. Behringer.
There were three threes, weren't there?
I'm not sure.
Four really jumped out out of the stock.
I think I heard maybe, but, but I mean, we.
Three or four, either one sign.
Yeah.
And whatever, there were three threes. There was Mr. Singleton and myself and Elmo.
And a sort of a four.
Either way.
Yeah, and I don't have a vote.
Greg can count as a four. He's okay.
Mr. Vance?
All right.
Major important things to worry about tonight. And Ms. Behringer, Ms. Behringer really wants Tupperware up there. She didn't want Town of Garner. She wants a Tupperware logo up there.
I'm already making a big concession. Come on, guys.
Yeah.
We'll get them to paint one of those little bubbles, that, the little thing that burps, the Tupperware on the top, Ms. Behringer, when they.
All right, council, can you get a thumbs up on four?
Let's go with four.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you, sure.
All right, thank you all very much for your quick attention to this matter.
I know. You're going to make me pay for that.
I know, you invited me to follow you up on the roof of the current rec center as we were looking, expecting up there. I will not accept an invitation to follow you up to, on this tower if you have.
I will not be going up on the water tower. So you're safe there.
I assume that was a case, thank you, sir. All right, it is nine o'clock, council, and, excuse me? Oh, no, yeah.
Just one other quick report. Yeah, go ahead. That the communications manager, Mr. Mercer, wanted me to share some, some data on our social media. So just a reminder that if you're not following the Town of Garner on social media, you should be. Our Facebook page reached over 42,000 people last month with over 6,500 engagements. And our YouTube channel had over 6,100 views, with viewers watching over 26,000 minutes of content. We're also on Twitter and Instagram, @TownOfGarner. If you're not following us on at least one of these other platforms, you might be missing out.
But Facebook was 42,000 views?
Forty-two thousand people. Reached over 42,000 people with over 6,500 engagements.
Okay. And what was the other one?
YouTube was 6,100 views.
YouTube, 6,100 views, okay.
Watching over 26,000 minutes of content.
And this, this, this may be a minor point, but it relates to information that goes out of this chamber on the airwaves. The, the AT&amp;T cable provider is no longer available with the, the government channel, as I understand it, and talking with Rick today.
Correct. Yeah, AT&amp;T did not give us the quality bandwidth we would need for the content we're putting on the channel. But there's other options for AT&amp;T users. They can watch it online. We're going to be showing some of our channel content on YouTube. So there are other options. And that's for the entire PEG media partners, not just Garner. But as a, as a system, it just did not work out. The quality was not so great, from what I understand. And so it, we thought it was best, the whole PEG media partnership thought it was best that we discontinued that, because it didn't represent the quality we wanted it to.
Okay, thank you. What else, Mr. Manager?
That's it?
Okay. Counsel, I'm going to suggest that we go ahead and do council reports. And then if you want to take a brief recess, and we will then entertain going into closed session. Is that okay with everybody? Phil, why don't I start with you down here on council reports?
Nothing this time.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Well, it's ironic that Rodney and Rick pursued that information, because I was going to mention to everyone, if you hadn't had the chance to look at two of the last people in Garner interviews that, that Rick has done, he's done one with our recently retired Sergeant Sophia Sandlin, which was done at full bloom, which is excellent, really good. It's interesting to hear her perspective, someone who worked here, I think, her whole career. And talked about the training, the extra training done here in Garner with the police department. She talked about the SRO program. And I believe if more people would listen to, to someone like Sergeant Sandlin talk about the SRO program, there wouldn't be some of the issues out there. But anyway, that, that's another thing to discuss. She talked about being the, on the, a black female here in Garner on the force, and talked about how hard it is to recruit minorities, whether it's women, whether it's blacks, browns, Asians, whoever, a minority on the police force is a challenge here in Wake County. Not just Wake County, but in the nation. But it's really good, because this is not someone who ever sought the spotlight. So it's a really good interview with, with, with her. Also, he did one with Jeff Trezenberg, which is now, I think, up in the meeting room, which is very good also. I mean, if you've seen that one, that's very good. Talked about all, you know, the issues with growth and changes here with UDO and long-range plans, et cetera, et cetera. So those two are very good. Get a chance to watch them. And it's on, you know, pops up on the channel when you're going by, or you can just, you know, watch it on YouTube or on our website. But both of those interviews are very good. I had that mentioned before, he brought that up tonight, so just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Both very good.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I want to thank Public Works and the managers for coordinating and getting so much-needed work done on Garner Road between Penny Street and Avery Street in particular, just a lot of edging and weed eating and trimming back our right-of-way so that walking on the sidewalk there is not a challenge. It looks much, much better, and appreciate that work. I do have one other request, Mr. Dickerson. On the property that the town owns at the corner of Avery Street and East, West Garner Road, there are, there's a retaining wall, it's old, and it's, some rocks have come loose and fallen down. I wonder if we could have those removed. Also, they're not on the sidewalk, but they are in the right-of-way. And there's also a dead tree stump or very large limb there that is unsightly. If we could get that removed, that would be good.
All right, we'll look into those.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Just three quick things. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Johnson for being prompt on a couple of transportation issues some folks had reached out to me about. Also, Downtown Garner is doing their art around town. I've mentioned that earlier. Some of the artists have started to send in samples of what they're creating. And it's just going to be amazing what is going to be in town this summer. So I'm really excited about that.
Are there going to be specific sites, or I mean, is it just going to be scattered all about?
We're choosing the locations, specific locations now. But they'll mostly be in downtown, on kind of a two-mile loop. Is that right, John? There's like a two-mile walking loop. And we're going to put maybe two or three in White Deer and Lake Benson as well. So we're really excited. The artists have been excited and engaged on that. So we're just, Ms. Behringer's been on it for years, she says. So here we are. Also, yeah, it's, it's really exciting. Also, just want to publicly thank the council and mayor and staff and the committee, the Juneteenth Committee. I've gotten so much feedback from other municipalities and leaders on how we approached it. And such positive feedback on our approach. And while we didn't get to do everything we wanted to do, they were really impressed with our attitude about including it as a larger sort of appreciation of, of freedom. So just want to publicly thank everyone for their input in that process. It's been good for, good for Garner, for folks to see us that, that way. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
Okay, we just want to mention one outstanding event that has transpired over the past couple of days with one of Garner Trojans, Zaluna Randolph-Ross, who will be going to the, with the Tokyo Olympics in the 400 meters. Yes.
Pretty impressive.
Yes. So congratulations, young man.
Absolutely. Was that it?
That's it.
Okay, well, the mayor wants to mention a couple of things. One is, I want to give a, a congratulations to our Garner Chamber. They had an event this past Friday, sort of a formal reopening, ribbon cutting. And they are back open. If you haven't had a chance to go to the building, in the building, I encourage you to do that. They've obviously done some pretty significant renovation there and changed the look of it some. But feel free to stop by anytime. They'd be happy to, to see you there. Also, if any of you go to Lake Benson Park, as I do fairly often, I live close there and I like to exercise there, you will see a tower that has been installed there. It's temporary tire, but it's pretty tall and you can see it. And as I understand it, that's, that's for Wi-Fi access for people for the July 3rd.
Communications between staff and emergency personnel.
Right, yeah. It's considered to be sort of a security, safety issue, I guess, whatever, so.
Yeah, just connectivity and coordination of the event.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah. So as this council sees that, and maybe people who are watching, uh, they have some questions about that, that's what that is there for. It's, uh, very prominent, but, uh, it'll come down after the, uh, the event itself. Uh, and I like, uh, Mr. Dellinger, um, want to thank, uh, the, the Juneteenth Committee. I, I commend the work that you've done. You've, uh, done human work, um, and, um, I did get to, to one celebration on, uh, Saturday, um, over at Dix Park. I had a chance to, to go over there. And so there were various events all around, different places, and some that I knew about, some I didn't know about. But, uh, uh, was a, was a good way to learn more about that, and I'm sure as, as years go on, there'll be even, uh, more, uh, specific opportunities to celebrate in that regard. But I want to thank the town manager who chaired that committee, and Mr. Dellinger, who served on it, and I, and I'm missing out the names of the others, but, uh, you know who you are, and, uh, thank you for your continuing. And I guess based on what I heard at a previous council meeting, there's still maybe the intent to, to read our proclamation at the July third event, uh, coming up. Okay, uh, that's all I have, so, um, yeah.
I have one other thing Rick was reminding me to, um, mention. Um, the Mike Wiley Show associated with the, uh, Juneteenth will be coming up, um, I think this...
Next week?
Next week, next week.
Yeah.
And, um, there'll be, uh, a chance for residents, so folks to go on, and, um, it's, you have to register in order to get the content, um, but it is open. And then there'll be a question and answer period, uh, after one of the, um, performances, streaming of one of the performances.
Right, exactly. Some of you may remember, I, I did not, but, uh, um, he, he, he was, he was here in our town and, uh, or maybe on more than one occasion, is that right, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, and you can go to...
Yes, he did, I think, uh, Jackie, uh...
Jackie Robinson.
Jackie Robinson, yes, forty-two, yes, I went, I took care of somebody who was younger. I'll vouch, yes.
Yeah.
You can go to, um, garnernc.gov for more information on that show, um...
Okay, so we're privileged to, uh, to, uh, have him again. All right, uh, Council, we could go right on in, uh, to our closed session, or if you feel like you need to... Oh, okay, I hear firmly a break, so, uh, I won't ignore that. Uh, I'll declare, uh, about an eight-minute break, how's that? And we'll come back and, um, entertain a motion for the last part of our...
Tell you what.
Agenda. Okay.
Put up with it.
You can be back, say, by nine-twenty or so, thereabout, that'd be helpful.
You can always make that motion on your own.